Whenever you're ready.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen with everyone. And this evening, we're gonna be discussing district suspension data specifically in school and out of school suspensions. So I wanted to start with our strategic plan. As Dr. Lewis continues to keep us focused on the strategic plan and the outcomes, I wanted to remind everyone that maybe viewing what our strategic plans are and how discipline data fits in to the strategic plan. And so there's actually three different areas that it fits into. Student-centered learning, safe and supportive schools, and as we'll see on the next slide, the data-informed decisions in a couple of different areas. Data-informed decisions is really where I weave myself and our department to and throughout the strategic plan. So I wanted to start by showing a comparison over the last two years of in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension data. So one of the first things that jumps out at us is that in 2018-19 school year, there was 2,140 in-school suspensions. That's the blue bar on the far left. Compared to 1920 school year, there was 436 in-school suspensions. Now, part of the work that we've been doing to start this school year is that we knew that our data was not as clean as what we would have liked it to be. And there was issues on our part switching over to a new system and being calibrated for what teachers could enter and should enter. And so professional development on our part was needed. Throughout this school year, we provided that to make sure that we have better data to inform our decisions. And so throughout the remainder of these slides, I'd like you to keep this slide in mind. Primarily because the 2018-19 data is going to look significantly different than the 1920 data, especially in the area of in-school suspensions. And the primary reason for that is that the 1819 school year data was not as clean as what we would have liked it to be. Here we have the top five reasons for in-school suspension from the 1819 school year to the 1920 school year. We see in the 1819 school year that classroom behavior accounted for the quarter of in-school suspensions. Classroom behavior made up a much smaller portion of in-school suspensions in the 1920 school year. Clicking the "black" was the primary reason for in-school suspensions in the 1920 school year. Here are the top five reasons for out-of-school suspensions from 1819 compared to 1920. We see that this has stayed relatively stable. Fighting accounts for the vast majority of our out-of-school suspensions, followed by student violence to students, which you'll see the name change from 1819 to 1920. We renamed it Violence to Peers. And that was to clarify what actually we were measuring there. And then we also see that no reason was coded in 1819 school year at 9%. We have done a much better job of, on the professional development side, of recording each incidence of out-of-school suspensions. Here is the number of students that have been suspended. So on the left-hand side, we started with in-school suspensions. The first two charts or the first two bars on the chart, this is at least one in-school suspension. So in the year 1819, we had 876 students with at least one in-school suspension. Again, we need to keep in mind that this data is not as clean as what we would have liked it to be, and that we did have a lot of coding errors in here that we cleaned up in the 1920 school year. In the 1920 school year, we had 321 students with at least one ISS or in-school suspension. And then we have multiple in-school suspensions. So in 1819, we had 279 students that had multiple in-school suspensions. Then in 1920, we had 73. The next two are about out-of-school suspensions, and we have at least one out-of-school suspension, then we have multiple out-of-school suspensions. We can see a slight uptick year over year for out-of-school suspensions. There's 117 students in the 1920 school year with multiple out-of-school suspensions. We did a calculation on the next few charts that you're gonna see. This is the rate per 100 students. We broke it down by level, so you have elementary, middle, and high school. On the left-hand side, you have in-school suspension rates. On the right-hand side, you have out-of-school suspension rates. So this trend has continued, where middle school has the highest in-school and out-of-school suspension rate per 100 students, and elementary has the lowest rate of suspensions, both in-school and out-of-school suspensions, per 100 students.
Testing.
Can you hear us, Paula? Is anybody else experiencing sound issues? Who's on call now?
I can hear you just fine, Zach.
Okay, thanks. Can they call Paula? I'm sure it's the setting of the peer that she needs to adjust.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, Paula, we're gonna have one of our techs reach out to you, if that's okay, and maybe they can help troubleshoot the sound issue. Yes, you probably can't hear.
I typed it in for her.
Wow. And your statement was way more concise than mine. Thank you for doing that, Melissa. Here, I've broken it down by building, and so this is the same calculation that you saw on the previous slide. And we've just broken it out by building. We see a consistent pattern from 1819 to 1920 school year, where New York had the highest in-school suspension rate per 100 students. And Sunflower and Quail Run were both at 0%, making them the lowest rate per 100 students. These slides are the middle school buildings and the high school buildings. In-school suspension rate per 100 students. West Middle School had the highest overall in-school suspension rate per 100 students in our secondary schools. We're switching over to out-of-school suspension rates. And again, we're breaking it down by building, and here's our elementary buildings. New York, following a similar trend, had the highest rate, out-of-school suspension rate, per 100 buildings. Here are our middle school and high school buildings. Here, Liberty Memorial Central had the highest rate of our secondary schools per 100 students. We also have it broken down by subgroup. And again, keep in mind that 1819 data was not as clean as what we would have liked it to be, but it follows a similar trend year over year. African-American students and American, Indian, Native, Alaskan students had the highest in-school suspension rate per 100 students. Here, we have the out-of-school suspension rate broken down by ethnicity. One thing that I do wanna note is Hawaiian Pacific Islanders have a very small end size. And that is what we're seeing here. It's distorting the percentage. I do not want to say that we are ignoring that by any means, but it does distort those percentages. So whereas that is the group with the highest rate of out-of-school suspensions, they're the only subgroup with under 100 within their subcategory. All other subgroups have over 100, and really over 300 in each of the subgroups. So the next highest is students with disabilities. This is a different calculation that we did. It's percent of the population. So we took the number of individual students who received in-school suspension, and we divided that by the total population within that subgroup. African-American and American Indian, Native, Alaskan students had the highest in-school suspensions as a percentage of their population at 7%. Out-of-school suspensions as part of the, as a percent of the population. Again, Hawaiian students had the highest percentage at 13%, but we are susceptible, again, to the very small end size, which distorts the percentages a bit. The second lowest is students with disability, or second highest is students with disability, at 8%. We wanted to do some in-year comparisons. As we, as Dr. Lewis has pushed for looking at data throughout the school year and not waiting until the very end to look at autopsy data, we wanted to be able to see if some changes or some adjustments during the school year have had an impact. Now, because our school year has been cut short, we had to compare first semester based on per day and second semester based on per day. We also had to break it out by level, because each level had a different number of days in the first semester and second semester. So elementary schools increased by .12 from first semester to second semester in suspension rates per day. Middle school saw the greatest increase from first semester to second semester, at a .65 increase per day. And then high school had a .44 increase from first semester to second semester. These included both in-school and out-of-school suspension. I would like to remind everybody that the raw data is in the report, and you can go back and look at any of those numbers within that report. We broke it out by building. We could see that Prairie Park had a large decrease from first semester to second semester. That's the gray bar that extends below, negative .34 decrease from first semester to second semester. We have a number of other buildings that also decreased. At the elementary level, this data is affected by small numbers, because it tends to be a handful of kiddos that receive suspensions. And therefore, when one, when something changes with one or two of them, the numbers adjust significantly. Here's the suspension rates per day by middle school and by high school. We see that Liberty Memorial had the largest increase from first semester to second semester, but Lawrence High actually had the highest rate. So second semester, they had suspension of almost two per day. We've broken it down by level and ethnicity, so what we're looking at here is elementary level and ethnicity. So all of the students on here are at the elementary schools. We saw a decrease for most of our subcategories. When it comes to ethnicity, we had a large increase for white students. Here's middle school by ethnicity. In middle school, our largest increase was with African-American Black students, a .67. And here's high school data by ethnicity. Our largest increase was in the white subcategory. We've broken it down by level and disability status. We see that elementary in the top-left corner decreased, students with disabilities decreased by .14. We see that a similar thing happened in high school. Students with disabilities saw a decrease. Middle school saw an increase for students with disabilities. Finally, we've broken it down by lunch status. You see at the middle school level, a few things. The students with free lunch status have some of the highest rates of suspension at over two per day. And they also saw the largest increase at .5 compared to reduced and paid. So we struggled a bit making certain comparisons just because we walked into this knowing that our data from 1819 wasn't as clean as what we would have liked it to be. But it does provide us with information that we can make decisions moving forward. And so with that, we have talked to all building administrators about their action steps. What are they going to, what initiatives are they going to do to create change in their data? We, as a district, Dr. Lewis constantly asks us these questions as well. Like, he tells us that we are not going to just admire the data, but we're going to change the data. We need to know what we are doing to change the data. And for me, in my mind, I need to think about things step by step in very, what this says logically or systematically. And so I have talked about logic models and mapping things out. The state has actually produced some logic models to follow for the KISA plan. And so I wanted to be able to implement some logic models in our conversations as we create some initiatives for change. So I've asked building leaders to walk through what initiatives they're attempting to put in place to create change so that we can walk through the rest of this logic model, and we could figure out, evaluate what's working and what's not. And so throughout the upcoming school year, as we think about these initiatives, they have all written down initiatives that they would, that they think are going to create this change. We are walking through evaluation questions with them. How much change is this gonna create, and what specifically is this going to change? We'll also identify those indicators of how we're gonna track that change. Timelines, data sources, where it's all gonna be collected and housed, and then most importantly, the data analysis portion of it. My department will be able to help them walk through. Maybe they would like to set up comparison groups and experiment and control. Maybe it naturally happens because one school is implementing something and another school is doing something different. Maybe it's growth within, but we could start to collect the data that we need to analyze it, to then evaluate the findings. So we do have some examples, and these are just examples of the initiatives. We're still walking through that logic model process to be able to nail down, okay, what measurements do we need, what questions are we answering, how are we gonna analyze this data, all those good things. And so these are just a few things that some building principals and district conversation has brought forward as some of the initiatives that we'll go through. One of the things that I did want to highlight is New York Elementary School. So I'm actually going to stop presenting and start presenting something else. So bear with me as I switch up, and then we can go back to the PowerPoint presentation for some questions. And so New York Elementary School, when we walk through this logic model, they have been doing stuff, on the whole, before we produced this logic model, and they just plugged these things in. And I thought it was a great example of kind of the process we're gonna go through. So this isn't the finished product. This is Sunny's attempt at putting the data that they've been doing, the work that they, the hard work that they have going on there, and plugging it in here. And we see that as she has filled this out, at the end, she's come down here, she includes the data that's in there, she has the charts. And so they can effectively make those decisions to say, hey, this is work. Maybe not everywhere, but we've seen, we've seen some good things here. We've seen some good movement. So average daily elotements by grade, overall, the total has gone down in a good way. And so this is one example of how we're going to walk through these logic models and evaluate the data to make it's doing what we think. Yeah?
I apologize. We can't see your, your screen, your shared screen.
That's because I needed to hit the share button. I thought I was hitting send. Okay, so, this is an example. Let's see if I can get it verbatim. We should have had the test on character scroll back. So again, Sunny has, at New York Elementary, they've been working on things. They collect this data. This has already taken place, but she went back in and plugged it into the logic model, and I thought it was a good example. Can you guys see it now?
Hey, Zach, this is Shannon. What I see is your screen share of all the people that are on the call.
That's all for a few minutes, but now I see what Shannon sees. That's all for a few minutes, but now I see what Shannon sees.
It's showing now, Zach.
Voila.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just gonna let you guys look through it at this point. So again, this was just an example that I wanted to show. This isn't something that I, I feel like we're going to dive into. Sunny was attempting to put this data in here, but this is absolutely some of the data at the end. Where they were able to write up the findings, the evaluation, and had charts and data to go along with it, to know that they need to keep moving in the same direction. I think the findings were actually that they wanted to expand it for each behavior, because it was effective.
Zach, can you say a little bit about, just briefly, or maybe Dr. Lewis will get to it later. I know we're not going to dig into what New York did, but what, what are some examples of things that they thought were successful in reducing suspensions?
So I need to read through her. I, I want her to be able to speak to it.
That's fine, thank you.
And she's not, she's not here for that, so I wanted to go to what she wrote in there. Cause maybe that would, that would help with that. So she does have some description over here of what happened. So hot spots, dig deeper into kids eloping, goes from data.
Thank you.
But I, I also wanted to highlight this because I think that in the future, as I present discipline data and we look at it as a district, I would like to highlight more of this. What buildings are doing and what they're seeing in their data. So that we can evaluate the initiatives and highlight those things that are working and adjust those things that aren't working the way that we thought they would.
Zach, can this, can you say, how do you, how do you share between buildings what is working?
I can, I can answer that. Through our weekly PLC, not, not weekly, I'm sorry. Those will probably go crazy if we met weekly. Through their week, say again, their monthly PLC meetings, those level meetings that Darcy and Rick has with, have with those different individuals. There's time where there's opportunities for them to share. They often do PLCs at different buildings, and so they may do a walkover of a building and the principals able to kind of highlight also some of the things that they're doing. But particularly when it comes to this discipline data, we want to be intentional about learning, you know, you've often heard me say, if we're expecting our buildings to be professional learning communities, then as a district, we must be a professional learning community. So at our district PLC meeting, we're looking at this data, we're digging in and seeing, okay, where has, where has positive gains happened? And then we're going to be, what, what is this principal, what is this school, what are our teachers doing in the classroom that we can then replicate and share at our administrative meeting with all principals?
I wanted to go back to the presentation to reference if we have any questions over any of the slides. I'd be able to answer those questions at this time.
Dr. Lewis, are you gonna, are you or are another district leader, maybe Dr. Stubblefield, going to talk a little bit about direction now that we've seen the data prior to me asking questions about it?
Yes, there were some actions that, excuse me, listed on the screen there. And the reason you don't have another 10 slides of what we're going to do is because we already have that within our strategic plan. And that's one of the things that we were intentional about in terms of, we pretty much know where our discipline data is. You know, not a lot has changed over the years, and so we know what we need to focus on. So we will continue the work, as Zach indicated at the beginning, the work that's in our strategic plan. However, there are some things that as we continue this work, there are maybe some ahhs or some things that we probably need to address differently. And so when it comes to this behavior or socio-emotional learning for our students, we have to make sure that we're valuing it as equally or more important as the academic subjects that are, that are taught. You've often heard me state that the most effective classroom discipline, discipline plan is an effective lesson plan. And so the work that we're doing, the curriculum instruction side of the house, it definitely has to impact, or will, should, it should impact discipline. When we talk about our students being able to see themselves in the curriculum, we asked our teachers to spend those weeks building relationships, not just so the teachers in like the students and the students in like the teachers, but for our students to form their relationships such that it's very difficult for me to dis, dis, disrupt or misbehave in a classroom where I know the teacher genuinely cares for me and that this class is just a class of, of a learning community. And so this is something that we just don't do in a learning community. In addition to that, some things that we're learning is, as Zach indicated, the data integrity is critical. And it's one thing to display some data and we have questions, we don't know if it's right, but if we know our data is accurate, then we can respond appropriately to the data. So for example, some things we've learned, we need to do more in terms of location, including the location of the incidents, the time of day of the incident. Those things will definitely prove beneficial in terms of having that data so our schools can respond. For example, if 40 to 50% of my discipline infractions are happening right after lunch, I need to look at what, what, what content areas are being taught after lunch? What's, what type of activities are students engaged in after lunch? So for those some things we will continue to work on. When we talk about, when we begin, when we begin to look at our disproportionality or disparities in our discipline, it's important that, and I will say that this district has done a tremendous amount of work in terms of looking at this. But there's more we can do in terms of some of what I call those subjective or sometimes called catchall infractions, classroom behavior or go and dis-
Disrespect.
Disrespect to staff. What does that mean for each individual teacher? When I, when I say that in order to do this, we have to disrupt some systems, disrupt some systems. We have an equity policy that's going to support this coming. We have to have discipline policies and procedures in place that don't perpetuate these disparities. And so when I say disrespect to staff, that probably means something different to everybody that's on this call, you know? And so understanding the student's culture, understanding what the students may, may be going through. You saw our, for example, our free and reduced lunch rate data by day. Everything may mean close to two incidents per day. Our students that are, I think it was mainly free, students that are on free lunch. We know that these students come to us with some variables. So are we really doing a good job really understanding that? And there's, and you're also hearing say that behavior is communication. Our scholars are telling us, are trying to tell us something, but the big question is, are we listening to them? So as it relates to our students that are on free lunch and hiding with incidents, there's some work we can do in terms of truly understanding this. And then lastly, I'll say is, and we saw this in a couple of our buildings, we, we provide continuous teacher support with some of our students with disabilities or some of our students with more challenging, challenging behavior. We will see these discipline incidents reduce as well. So it's a number of things that are already in our strategic plan that we will just need to continue to work on. But a big emphasis in Rick, Rick and Darcy are working with Kathleen at KU to look at our infractions as well as the consequences, to make sure that we are calibrating those and to make sure that we are just not putting our students in this catchall infraction, such as, like I said, classroom behavior or disrespect to staff.
Thank you, I think we have a few more board members that have questions. Erica?
Yes, hi, thank you for your presentation, Zach. Dr. Lewis, I'm happy to hear that you are looking at policies. That's really good to see if there are any disparities being driven by the policies. I do have a question, I noticed that Billy Mills, I believe, at all the middle schools, they had the lowest incidence, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and so my question is, do we have building data? And I'm not requesting this information, just wanting to know if you have, have it. Building data by subgroup or subgroup by the building? To see if there are buildings that are outperforming other buildings as it relates to subgroups that may be experiencing higher incidence rates. Like for example, if Billy Mills is performing as lower rates than the other middle schools, are there African-American students still the highest? Are they lower? Like what does that look like?
Yes, I'll, I'll jump in, Zach, jump in as well. And so yes, that's, that's for that question, yes, we have that, that data. Buildings will get that data as well, but in terms of displaying it because the in counts may be small, partly located in some of those areas, some of those subgroups, we can't display it here.
Right, yeah, and I'm, I'm not requesting that either, even, I was just seeing if you had that information, thank you.
Yeah, and to connect that to Kelly's question earlier around how we'll be sharing it. So those are some of the things that will come out, because the principals received this data when?
Last week.
Last week, and so they'll be diving into this data and we can have those conversations, albeit virtually now, we can have those conversations about what was the difference maker? What can we pinpoint that happened at Billy Mills' second semester that maybe didn't happen in the first, you know, in the first semester? And so as we continue to develop these logic models, we'll be able to share those strategies. But also keep in mind that just because the strategy worked at school A, it may not work at school B. However, we definitely want to hear those strategies and so we can possibly replicate many of the strategies that are working, that we can take to scale.
Okay, thank you.
I think Paula, Paula had a question.
Hi. Can I, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I, I would be, I don't know if this might be a separate conversation, but do we have data on graduation rates for students with suspension? Or what does that look like for in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension students? And the same for graduation rates for students who've never been suspended?
Yes, we, we're building that system out right now. We have to pull some data from our former platform, Skyward, and we're getting all that data cleaned up right now so that we can start looking at the rates and whether or not it's a significant predictor. I think our hypothesis would be that it would be a significant predictor.
Right.
So we just need to make sure that we get that data as clean as possible and have a comparison group and be able to go that way. But yeah, we're in the process of that right now.
Okay, all right, thanks Zach.
Zach, I don't know if you mentioned this, because sometimes I was going in and out. Or can you even assess this? The subjectiveness of what warrants in-school suspension versus the out-of-school suspension? Because I noticed that, like maybe some schools have a higher in-school, in-school suspension rate, but may, but potentially maybe the category was, was same, was the same. So maybe, like say, the person who rated the out-of-school suspension, say, was disrespect towards a staff member, but maybe they felt it was extreme. Or is there, is there a possibility that some of the out-of-school suspensions could have been in-school suspensions and vice versa? Does that make sense?
I, I mean, of course, it's always a possibility. And that's one thing that we're looking at doing in the, in the future is looking at some, I guess I would call it integrator reliability, where we as a district PLC will look through a sampling or some of those that are recorded and also record whether or not we agree or disagree. So that we can look at some of those rates of disagreement. Because maybe some of these are, you know, should be categorized something else, maybe it shouldn't have been in-school suspension. But we're not quite there yet. That was something that we would have done this semester, but COVID-19 kind of shifted some priorities temporarily.
Yeah, I would say we were, we were, while I'm speaking for myself, I was really excited about being able to dig deep into data, to Paula's point, you know, in terms of looking at our discipline data, you know, how are, and then of course ultimately, by, you know, having years of discipline data, if a ninth grader suspended more than three times, what's the likelihood of him or her graduating? You know, but we have to make sure, one, our data is clean. I was excited about potentially looking at our map data, looking at our climate data at the end of the year, kind of make some of those connections as well. And I will say this. I've not seen, and this may not be popular with some, but I will say, I have not seen any data that states that out-of-school suspensions or suspensions are beneficial for students. Uh, Dr. You've seen it?
No, no.
So with that, as a district, we have to make sure that we are supporting our building principals and administrators. Our building principals and administrators have to support our teachers, ultimately our teachers have to support our, our students. And so we go to a point where there are no out-of-school suspensions. You know, that's, that's a huge shift. And we certainly just can't say at the beginning next year, there should be no more out-of-school suspensions based on it doesn't, you know, benefit students. What we need to look at is what are those alternatives to suspensions? There again, I go back, behavior is a communication, what are our scholars trying to tell us? What is their environment conducive for them to, to learn? And so are we teaching those appropriate behaviors? And so when it comes to those alternatives to suspension, this is where our work comes in with our restored practices. You know, when we look at our fighting, is like one of the top infractions, there's always something that's, that's leading up to a fight. Our third principal, the classroom teacher, very few times, if any, do students just get up and just start fighting? It was, had to be something that led to those fights. So going back to our relationship work, making sure that our students feel connected and that they feel comfortable going to the teacher saying, you know, Zach said something that I didn't like. So instead of me taking out on Zach, we are taught those skills that I can go to Zach. And it may be under, you know, adult supervision at first, but we have to teach our students those, those skills that they need to kind of restore those relationships. Because if we don't do that while they're in school, they will leave us. And instead of fighting, they may pick up a weapon, you know, to do harm to someone else. And so it's critically vital that we continue to work to teach those appropriate behaviors while supporting our building principals and principals supporting our teachers. Now, there are some times where suspensions may be warranted. Of course, we can't have anyone violent such that are definitely that are assaulting staff, assaulting other students. We, there are some, some opportunities where suspensions are warranted, but we have to look deep into some of these other infractions. But there again, there's always something that's leading up to some of these major infractions as, as well. So I say all that to say, I'm confident that the work that we have outlined in our strategic plan will definitely get us there as it relates to a reducing discipline.
Melissa, can I jump in and ask a quick question?
Sure, Kelly.
Dr. Lewis, along those lines, and I'm glad we're looking at this data, but as you've noted, we actually do have quite a bit of data leading up to this point about what was happening with in-school and out-of-school suspensions in Lawrence. And I don't think it's going to look any different than national trends around the harm done for in-school and out-of-school suspensions that you were just outlining. So as we move to look at different ways or different framework for assisting students that are having challenges within the classroom setting or within the building itself, who might have harm to self or others risk for that, those factors that teachers have to manage, how are we, because this is the way we've always done business, how are we working to bring teachers along with us and other staff members along? to bring teachers along with us and other staff members along as we shift direction within this strategic plan?
And so, that will be part, that will be part of the work that we will do with our principals, there again, in this logic model. As we dig deeper into this data, expectations would be for principals to take this data back to their buildings and look at, you know, they can have this data by grade level. They can have this data, obviously, by race and ethnicity. They know, you know, they can have it by teacher as well. And so, taking this data back and having those conversations with our teachers to make sure that we are indeed bringing them along. And there again, leveraging where there are no infractions in a classroom more than in a grade level, see what, you know, what they're bringing in those grade levels that can impact some of those high discipline areas.
Yeah, I want to highlight New York again for what the work that they did with their logic model. This was something that they made a building-wide goal, that they wanted to reduce the loping. They targeted it, they had a plan, they watched the data, they did all of those things, and they said, you know what, this worked. We saw a decrease, and I think that that work has brought teachers in, that they have a shared vision, they know the goal, and they do the work.
This is Anna. Our principals are watching, and one of them just sent a text to remind, I don't, this may not be directly related to what you just shared, asked, Kelly, but one of our middle school principals says that they're in the process of looking at the discipline behavior metrics getting cleaned up because it does not match up to what is in our CI3T reactive plan and the board document. So, that work there involves teachers and working with teacher leaders to talk about what's in the plan. So, one of our principals said that is something that is misaligned and one of the goals for them to do in the next four months. So, I just wanted to share.
I really appreciate that, Dr. Stubblefield, because that's one, as a member of the policy committee, it's something that Paula and Shannon and I were hoping was, not hoping, we had heard was happening. So, the board fully supports that, or at least the policy committee, I can say, is really excited about that work and the alignment that can come along with the direction we want to be going in now, and hopefully, we can support principals in those efforts.
Yep, that is our plan. Thank you.
I was at that, Dorsey reminded me that we do have our principal data consults. When we look at this data and will continue to look at this data ongoing. And in addition to the monthly PLCs that our principals have at those levels, at those different levels, elementary, high, Recon Dorsey also have those monthly one-on-one meetings. And she did indicate from saying that it kind of created this playbook, because there was the need for teachers to deescalate some situations. And so, once they all agreed on what to do within this, I guess, this playbook over at New York, they really saw some changes. And so, they were looking at really how to deescalate students' behaviors. And so, she said, once they all agreed on what to do in that regard, they really saw some changes.
Thank you. Any more questions, board members? Again, thank you.
Melissa, I have another text from one of our principals just saying, it's important as we look at it, they are happy to hear that the board is looking at the policy because there, some policy does, that does not currently support the shift, and they both just need to be aligned. So, they were just glad to hear that the policy committee was doing the policy as well.
I 100% agree with that, because I was concerned that that work, I wasn't, I mean, I knew there was a direction, but with everything that's been going on for you all and all the shifts that were happening, I wasn't entirely, I was afraid that work might get lost. So, I'm just so excited to hear that you're still working on it and fully support that effort, and we'll do what we need to do on our end once we hear from you all.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Well, thank you, Zach, for your report.
Oh, you're welcome.
Carol?
Yes, can I just interject? Well, I'm just so glad to see that the restorative justice practices are still just going to be improved or just, you know, because I've heard this from complaints from Liberty Memorial Central Middle School parents that that really hasn't been in practice. So, I'm just glad to see it's still on the strategic plan.
Yes, Carol, thank you for that. One of the things which I will own in conjunction, one of the things that we did in reflecting on and consulting with Kibkor and another consultant about rolling this out, we made, we did a good job of training the entire staff, but we had a misstep in not having a dedicated person that was not necessarily an administrator, because their place were full to make sure that those things, like the circles were happening. And so, we looked at a couple of places that have been using this in larger districts for a while, in particular, Denver Public Schools, and they honestly had a whole plan on, like, year one implementation, year two benchmarks. And so, we're in the process of pulling all of that together so that we can check our progress throughout and making sure that we provide the support and structure. So, although we have two middle schools whose staffs were fully trained, we will go back and just start, like, year one with them, and there will be some things that they have in place, and then we know the places where we misstepped in year one. So, we're putting, pushing, reset on that and making sure that we have a clear articulated plan that parents and board members and staff and administrators can see what is actually supposed to occur in year one, and then what the benchmarks to look at that look like. So, that was a lesson learned, but we have a plan in place to support our building administrators and our teachers next year.
So, thank you, and I look forward to meeting with Ann Hawks. Thank you. Along the lines of what Carol was just asking, it occurs to me that as you implement those new strategies around restorative practices and a few other behavioral modifications that might be in play for some principals and buildings based on their individual needs, that there may be policy alignment that doesn't align with the practices or the programs that you're piloting. And I don't know that the district has done this, and I'll maybe defer to Shannon or to Dave on this question, but in spaces where we might need to give a building a, like an ability to amend a policy that we have related to discipline, for example, if there's a mandate that you have to have a certain number of days of in-school or out-of-school suspension based on a particular behavior, and that was not the direction that the principal wanted to go, although I do think we went through and amended that so that the individual principal has some leeway to make those shifts. I'm just wondering, as you develop those plans and using restorative practices as an example, and you run into a policy that doesn't align, and the board hasn't acted quick enough to amend that policy, is there a way or a mechanism for which the individual principal can come to the policy committee and we can make adjustments or recommend adjustments more quickly to the board? Is that, has that been an issue?
Honestly, I don't think it, not to my knowledge, it's not been an issue, but one of the things we can make sure, because I know the policy committee meets regularly at least once a month, but, so we can make note of that, and then as we are looking at what comes up, if there needs to be something, we can communicate with Dr. Lewis if policy committee needs to reconvene sooner or at a different time. But yeah, I honestly, I'm not really sure. I haven't, I hadn't heard that directly from a building principal. That's not to say that it's not something that they've come across and they just didn't share because they didn't think it was an option. Now that they're listening, they know, so we can definitely look at what that looks like.
Kelly, like, along the lines, I mean, I think you're pretty much saying the same thing, but like, just like we have, like, the cultural relevant, it's not a rubric.
Resource criteria.
Resource, yes. As we're, as we're addressing the discipline, anything that's related to that and trying to make that shift to where we can decrease that, I feel like that should be kind of, as they're making those changes, the policy should be pulled up so that we can, you know, review that and see, is there anything that's in the policy that needs to be changed? So, that way, we can, it can be done in a quicker manner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was more worried about, like, if you were trying to adjust the entire matrix, Dr. Stubblefield, that work in and of itself might take a year, might take two or three years, and if there's something more immediate, I would like to be able to respond.
Okay, and one of the assistant principals just shared with me that that had, that had been an issue this year, so they're glad to hear this. And so, we'll work through it. Dave Cunningham shared that some of it may be an assumption of a policy, but it may be more practices and handbook. So, we'll work through what they, what may be perceived as a policy challenge versus a handbook component. So, yeah, this is great dialogue, and people are excited to hear, and we'll look through that, those components. So, thank you.
Melissa, this is Shannon, I have some input I want to share on this topic. So, I guess I'm a little, I'm viewing this policy discussion through a different lens, maybe, because our board policy is, I think, fairly flexible and not prescriptive at the policy level of what you find on the district website, with the exception of those areas where we are required by state law to give out certain kinds of discipline for certain kinds of behaviors. For example, out-of-school suspension is mandatory for weapons violations. You know, we did a lot of work in the policy committee over the last couple of years, talking with staff and reviewing the discipline matrices that were brought to us from the building leaders, from the middle school and high school building leaders, and those do get published in the, in the district, in the school handbooks, kind of as a procedural matter. When the board adopts the handbooks in July, it's a statement of policy, but there's no reason why those couldn't be amended, you know, throughout the, throughout the year if necessary. So, I guess I just wanted to clarify what policy we're talking about, because it's, I think it's more, it's more, it's living in the, in the individual school handbooks than it is in the, in the board policy manual.
I mean, I guess I would say, Shannon, that I was thinking more specifically about those matrices that we just went over, I think about two years ago, we approved them within the handbook. So, I'm actually speaking to the same thing you are, but I think there's some imperfections in there, even though we did that initial work, that really needs to be updated in order to align with the district that is saying, we really need to move away from leaning on out-of-school suspensions as a way to interfere with, with discipline or behavioral issues, given what we know about out-of-school suspension. So, if we're looking from that lens, then that matrix actually is imperfect in some areas.
Sure, and I don't disagree with that, and I'm supportive of changes to that. I just wanted to clarify that the, what's in the matrix or in the matrices was driven from, it wasn't driven from the members of the policy committee, it was driven from staff coming to us and saying, here, this is what we would like to have. So, I'm, I'm actually a little bit discouraged that staff have felt like that there's problems with those and nothing been brought to the policy committee to address that, right? Because that's not something that you or I or Paula, as board members, would in the first instance, you know, initiate necessarily. So, I do, I do hope that that is, as these conversations go forward, that if there are problems, that building staff are trying to elevate that so that it does come through the process and we can address it appropriately.
Shannon, I think you articulated what Dave was saying, that it's more about what has been adopted and placed in the handbook versus board policy. So, that is a little, you can change that a little more swifter without, because that was driven by what was recommended by building principals or at some point, and, and I think it goes to the point in regards to when we were talking about, like, past practices, like people believe in or individuals think in this policy, when it's more of, we've always done this and this is practice, versus it actually been a policy. So, the fact that we're having these conversations will give us an opportunity to really align what our expect, outline our expectations and also align our matrix, matrixes to reflect a shift in what we believe is best for students.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Well, if there aren't any more questions, I think, well, I don't think we, time to move into our regular board meeting. Thanks again, Zach.
You're very welcome. Thank you, guys, for that. I appreciate you. I'll put this presentation together, and I also have the top-based document that provides this, which is not a data detail on our discipline. So, thank you. Dr. Lewis, you're going to be logged out. Quick, we're switching up, so we're going to, because you will be ready.
Okay, thank you.
Melissa, are you still with us?
Oh, I am. I thought we were waiting for Dr. Lewis to get on his screen, so I apologize. Are we waiting for Dr. Lewis to come? Oops, can you, everyone hear me? Okay, great, I'm just going to, I'm going to call, oh, there we go. I like, yes. I would like to call the April 27th board meeting order. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda. This is Carol.
Yes, and we need, do you see that? So, I move, we, oh, my screen is freezing on me. We had made some amendments, so we say, we move, we amend and approve the agenda for the April 27th, 2024 meeting. May I have a second?
I'll seconds, Erica.
Thank you, Erica.
Melissa, Shannon, what are we amending? Could you clarify?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, to include the updating personnel report that we had there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will, we have a special recognition for three different schools, so I will just call the schools one by one, and then Dr. Lewis present them. So, we have New York Elementary School, National PTA, School of Excellence Award, now is Sunny, Sunny going to comment, Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, with Principal Sunny Halstead and Jamie St. Viva, the PTA president.
Yes, and as they are getting ready to speak, I want to congratulate New York Elementary School's Principal Sunny Halstead and their parent, Teacher Association, or PTA president, Jamie St. Viva. This is a national recognition of their successful partnership. We know that our scholars are more likely Um, we know that our scholars, um, are more likely to achieve and be successful uh, when parents partner with their schools and are actively engaging in their learning. New York Elementary has demonstrated this and has worked hard um, on this successful partnership, and I applaud their efforts. They are a model of other schools, and we've invited Sunny Halstead and Ms. Saint Viva talk about this national recognition and their partnership. Sunny?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. Uh, I don't know if Jamie's on the call. I can't really tell. Um, exactly, but, um, you know, when I came to New York about a few years ago, um, Jamie approached me about really extending our PTO into a PTA, and if you know the difference between the two, um, it really gives the, um, PTA a larger purpose in the school, and while they still do the regular things that you might imagine a PTO to do, um, it really gives them advocacy role, and so, um, it really shows a commitment to our partnership. And as we partner, um, throughout the year, we really keep in mind our key goals, and one of the, um, goals that we really have focused on is sharing engagement. And so, just an example of something that we've done, um, in our work together is, um, we really wanted to find that focus. So, um, in order to do that, we surveyed all of our stakeholders, um, figured out what they wanted, what we needed at New York Elementary, um, and really what came out of it was our social emotional or training on trauma. And so that fit really nicely into, um, what the district, um, has been doing on trauma-informed schools. And so, just one example of what we've been doing, um, we had a trauma-informed night in the spring of two thousand nineteen. We had ninety parents attend, which if you know, um, the size of our school, that is amazing. We had a packed house. Um, so it was a wonderful night to start teaching, um, you know, our families about trauma. And so then with the work of our PTA, um, gave us great connections, we, um, got a, struck up a deal with, um, Thomas Mart and the Smart Connections Training, and were able to provide to our, um, families a six-weeks course um, for free. And so we had, um, about forty adults attend that course. Um, kids were provided with, um, some classes from Premier Martial Arts, free of cost, where they were taught self-regulation skills. Um, so that's just one example of the things that, you know, the thing that we're doing at New York Elementary. We're really taking into account things that we need to be working on and really partnering and making sure that we're, you know, always keeping that key goal in the, in the forefront of our mind. So I really appreciate having such a supportive, um, and connected PTA. They really are a true partnership. Um, and we're really doing good and hard work at New York, and we couldn't do it without our PTA. So I'm really, really appreciative. I appreciate you letting me come and speak tonight.
Well, thank you so much, and, um, congratulations to you and, and the PTA president and New York Elementary, because parent involvement is definitely key to success.
Yep, we have a lot of caring parents and a great, strong community. We're really, really proud of that.
I personally enjoy the site council meetings and seeing that, that participation, and you can see the, um, PTA meeting, you know, as we go in, go along, so thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you again. So we have, um, Barbara, uh, the journalism teacher, and some student representatives here from uh, Lawrence High School's Quill and Scroll International Writing Photo and Multimedia Contest Awards, um, as they receive the Kansas State Press Association Honors. Dr. Lewis, do you want to speak to that before? The representatives, okay.
Another honor. I'm super excited. I've always been, um, pleased and excited about both of our high school journalism programs, and Barbara, and of course, there's no stranger to awards, and so I will let her share, um, some of the recent honors that they received.
Hi, sorry, um, I feel like I'm doing a lot of Zoom, and so I'm trying to figure out Google Meet a little bit. So, um, hi, I'm Barbara, and I teach journalism at Lawrence High School, and I, I know at least I've seen a couple of my kids' names on, on the computer, so, um, um, we've had a couple of big awards this year. Probably the biggest one was, um, in December, they were, uh, or November, um, back when we could travel, we went to Washington DC, and they were recognized as pacemaker winners, which is really like the biggest award, um, you can get in classic journalism. We were one of nineteen schools in the country to win that award, and, um, we've won it two of the last three years, and we've been finalists, um, for three consecutive years. So that was a big honor for the budget. Um, and then, um, uh, early this semester, the, the, the yearbook staff, or maybe that was last semester, but they, um, they were one of the visual award winners for, um, the Quill and Scroll International, um, uh, Honor Society. Um, and so that was an exciting, um, recognition for them, and a lot of those students will individually be able to apply for scholarships as a part of that. And then again, and, uh, this last, this past month, um, the journalism students, the newspaper and, um, online staff, uh, again, um, received a lot of recognitions as part of that Quill and Scrolls, um, International Honors, and, um, uh, they were like visual award winners there. So we've had a lot of, uh, very exciting things happen this year. And, uh, I think a real testament to these students is just how hard they've worked since, um, our schools have been shut down, um, working pretty much from the moment that things, well, definitely from the moment things were announced, um, and actually even before then. Um, they have big plans to, you know, continue ser- serving their students and, um, to figure out how to carry on that tradition through this difficult time, which, you know, I, I, we can look back to a hundred years ago when the budget was doing the same sort of work through a pandemic. And so, um, they're definitely amazing leaders and amazing kids, and I'm really happy to have the opportunity to work with them. And I don't know, if, 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 Daniel, I know you're on here, or if any of my other kiddos who are on here right now, if any of you would like to say something real quickly, because they're, they're amazing.
Aw. That's, that's quite all right. Any, anyone else want to speak? Any scholars? Make sure you, um, press, unpress, take off the mute button just in case, unmute.
Is Daniel on here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Daniel, how are you?
I'm doing pretty good, uh, just working on stories right now, um, as usual. So how Everything's frozen.
Okay, go ahead, try again.
Do you want to try one more time, Daniel?
Sure. Do I sound good now? Yeah, um, well, uh, uh, I will say specifically, um, just recently, I think the, um, um, yeah, it was the National Classic Press Association awarded Best of Show to our newspaper for being the top ten. And I know our online news and feature coverage, uh, that also got, I think, ninth place in the nation for COVID-nineteen coverage. That's something that we are pretty proud about. Um, so just make sure you follow our Twitter for other updates about what we're doing. Okay.
And we're, and we're also excited because this, um, Saturday, they're going to be announcing results for the state journalism contest, and, uh, we've taken first or second most years, and last year we were first, and so we're just, fingers crossed, we'll see how that goes, but, um, um, lots of exciting things, and it's, it's nice to teach in an area where we've continued to like, like, the, the na- the national and the state association of continuing to find ways for students to be recognized, um, and to, for the hard work that they're still doing, and I think that's, um, hugely important for students right now. But I think that's all I had. Thank you so much.
I was about to tease Daniel, he wasn't on here, so he's probably still asking somebody some tough questions. I've been interviewed by several occasions. He, he does an amazing job of really, uh, asking questions, and so I can see a bright picture um, in, in front of me, Daniel. So thank you so much, uh, to the entire journalism staff over at Lawrence High School. And we do follow you on Twitter. Sometimes I want to know what's going on, and I just, first phase, that goes to his budget.
Thank you very much.
I, I just want to add that I have a lot of your students come through my house, because I have a, um, a student, an LHS student, a couple of LHS students, and so, not, in addition to the fact that you, you set them up with these skill sets, uh, to, to Barbara, that they can apply when they leave here, that are, I mean, the, the amount of professionalism that you instruct on is just extraordinary. And they all feel, like, they talk about you in this, um, in this way of which they are, um, mightily connected to you. They rely on you, um, both from a social emotional perspective and also just to depend on your, um, advice on what they should do in their lives. So, um, congratulations, but really grateful that you're in our district and that you do such extraordinary work. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
I agree.
I agree.
Thank you again.
Oh, sorry, Carol, go ahead. Oh, that's okay. Well, I just want to echo what, uh, Kelly said, but as a parent, I have a daughter that's in the journalism class, Mrs. Tholen's class, and Mrs. Tholen goes above and beyond. She gives us parents, she loops us parents in, so we know what's going on in the journalism class. And yes, I will say, yes, Daniel asks a lot of tough questions, because there are times when I'm in the Zoom meeting and he'll ask me questions. So you're doing a great job, Mrs. Tholen. Thank you. And she brings in guest speakers during this hard time, so that's incredible. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Well, enjoy the rest of your evening. And thank you. And, um, last, and at least we have, um, Kelly Tom- Thompson, Speech and Debate Director, as well as some student representatives from Lawrence Free State High School's Forensics, Speech and Debate.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to say that this season, the Free State Speech and Debate team qualified fourteen events to the National Invitational Events Tournament of Champions. That number represents both a school and a state record number of qualifiers to that particular tournament. For the NSDA National Tournament, uh, we weren't obviously allowed to host our qualifying tournament. So instead, a blind panel of coaches from across Kansas ranked anonymous applications from students in the East Kansas, Kansas District, which encompasses both Lawrence schools and also most of Johnson County. In that blind voting process, Free State came away with a school-record number of qualifying events to the national tournament. In total, we had fifteen events qualified to the national tournament this season. The NSDA has decided to run the national tournament virtually this June rather than Albuquerque, and KESHA has approved Kansas schools' participation in the competition, which will be their first virtual competition in Kansas school history. The squad also finished the season with a first-place sweepstakes finish in debate, a first-place sweepstakes tradition speech, and a first-place sweepstakes finish in overall district sweepstakes for the year. So the second year in a row, the, the Free State has won three district sweepstakes awards. Some other brief notes, and then I know a couple of our students want to say a couple of things. Uh, we qualified two duo interpretations to the national tournament this year. Those are the first two duos to ever qualify for nationals from Free State. Uh, the team won six events on our, in our qualifying series this year, which is the most in school history. The fifteen events that we qualified for nationals is a school record. The team will have ten events and fifteen, ten events and fifteen students competing in nationals this year, both of which are also school records. And then lastly, I want to say that senior Savani Badramkada, who I know is on the call, is the first four-time national qualifier, she qualified all four years in high school in school history as well. Thank you for letting, letting me talk.
Thank you. Congratulations. Um, any scholars want to, want to talk? I would especially love to hear from our senior and then, and their experience with being four-time.
Hi, okay, my name is Alina, I'm not in class, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, I'm in my car, I'm at work, but, um, yeah, I just want to say it's really nice to be, um, recognized for this. Thank you for letting us do this, especially right now. Um, making the time to recognize us, because I think we all put a lot of hard work in. And, um, KT and the rest of our coaching staff, who's not here, but they also helped us a lot. I think we've all really, we've really worked hard to make this our favorite, like, one of the years we can compete the hardest in, a lot of us, because we're seniors, and we really wanted to like, try our best, and I think that work we did showed off, paid off. Um, we're all really excited to compete for nationals, even though it's on Zoom, but like, that's still going to be fun. Um, but yeah, thank you for the recognition and stuff. Um, yeah.
Thank you so much, and, and we wish you the best in your, in your competition this weekend. Anyone else?
Um, uh, hello, my name's Husey Butar. Uh, can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, I just wanted to just like expand slightly on what, um, Alina said, like, um, uh, I, I've been doing forensics all four years as well, and like, uh, you know, no one, I'll, i- it's just amazing to get recognition because a lot of people don't, you know, really understand what speech and debate is. Um, a- and, uh, it's just, um, like, people don't understand, like, on average this year, um, a lot of us spent, or at least, I, I know a few of us spent at least like eight hours after school a week, eight hours a week after school, just working on forensics and, uh, trying to help, um, the, uh, the first years get better and trying to better ourselves as well. And, um, getting recognition for, you know, um, all four years of work and working as hard as we can, just i- it feels great. So thank you.
You are quite welcome. I, I had a four, um, speech and debate, um, kiddo a couple of years back, so I know you, you, you all put in a lot of, um, hard work and hours beyond school, so I'm great that, it's great that we can recognize you today. Anyone else? Board members want to comment?
I just want to say congratulations, and again, it's so unfortunate, because normally you would come around and shake each of our hands, or I would, I would want to shake your hand, so I'm, I'm so uh, yeah, thank you so much and congratulations. Thank you for representing Lawrence.
Agreed.
Now, I certainly hope that, I know you said you were a hard guy, so I mean, I hope you were, right? But again, congratulations, and thank you, Kelly, um, over at Free State for inviting me to, uh, attend, uh, virtually the digital award ceremony for the National Speech and Debate, uh, national qualifiers that was held on, uh, April thirteenth. It was a good feeling to hear, um, a lot of Free State students' names called, you know, amongst some other, um, districts around the area. Super proud of them, so congratulations to you all.
And please let us know, um, the results of Saturday. Now, I'm not sure, do you have, um, I know I, I have a Twitter handle for Lawrence Hive. Um, is there a Twi- Twitter handle for Lawrence Free State Speech and Debate? That we could follow along on Saturday?
Yeah, our tournament's actually in June.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. But our Twitter ha- Twitter handle is LFSHS Forensics and Debate. It's kind of long, but I'll, I'll send it to you in an email.
Where'd I get Saturday from? Oh, it's a Saturday, isn't it?
It's, it's actually an entire week long. Um, this Saturday was supposed to be the state championship tournament.
Oh, that's where I got Saturday from.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Um, we will move on to the report. The president and I, um, don't have much. Uh, yes, thank you for everyone who participated in this special recognition. Um, I did attend a virtual site council meeting at LHS, um, where they, it was just really, the atmosphere, even virtually, was just thriving and, um, um, Dr. Johnson, you know, motivated parents, and they had some discussion, and I know Carol could do back, was all, also there, so I, I had to come in a little bit late because I had a pri- a meeting prior to that, so maybe she can fill in blanks, but it was just overall good to hear about um, trying to honor our seniors. in blanks. But it was just overall good to hear about trying to honor our seniors, even even in the midst of our new normal. And although we may have to push graduation back to a later date, but just being able to find a way to recognize them during the time where we would have done it in person. So just brainstorming different, different, different opportunities to lift up our seniors in the month of May. Also, just Dr. Lewis, the district, the district leadership, and our community partners, just, just going above and beyond. So grateful for the, for the weekend meals that the community partners opted, volunteered to do for our, for our families. Again, you know, it just feels good to have that sense of collaboration. And I would love to, I always like attribute that to Dr. Lewis, as well as the other community leaders. You know, we talked about how in the past we had operated in silos, but now that, you know, the impact, the power of truly working together as a community, every entity. So I will continue to extend my gratitude for that. And I think that's all I have. This time, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you, Melissa. And again, good evening, board members and community members that may be joining our board meeting virtually. I want to thank students, staff, and parents who completed our survey about our continuous learning opportunities being provided. That survey was issued on last week, as opposed to waiting to until the end of the school year to send out a survey. We wanted to get some feedback right here in the, at the midpoint of our continuous learning plan, just in case there's areas that we need to do a better job of, or when areas we need to pivot. So we will be reading all of your feedback and using it to inform our services and the support that we have for you going forward. Since our kindergarten orientation sessions had been canceled this month, we want to invite families of children who will be five years old on or before August 31 to please register your child for the fall online at usd497.org/newstudentregistration. Again, that's usd497.org/newstudentregistration. This is the same page that our early childhood program uses to register their four-year-olds for our full-day pre-K program. So we welcome Lawrence families to sign up, their preschoolers too. We will plan to host some type of welcoming activities for new families in the fall, obviously up under the guidelines that we may be up under at that time. We have announced some leadership changes during the past two weeks. I want to congratulate Patrick Kelly, who will become our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Board members and community members may know and staff may know that Patrick and Bill DeWitt led our efforts to bring our College and Career Academy to fruition. We are discussing the best way to backfill Patrick's position, but I will assure the board and community that it will not change or delay the plans for starting the academy. Patrick is heavily invested in the College and Career Academy and will be supervising. So he definitely will have, still have his hands in, he is probably in the College and Career Academy. Also, congratulations to Heather Rink, Broken Arrow Elementary's new principal, and Matthew Rink, a new assistant principal at Free State High School. The Kansas Department of Education began last week a new partnership to broadcast educational content produced by Kansas teachers on PBS. Invite families to watch those programs on our local PBS stations. I had someone from the governor's office in Arizona to reach out to me regarding our meal partnership with our local restaurants. And today, we had an opportunity to share with them our plan, you know, how we, how that came to fruition. Paula Murris was on that call, Lawrence Chamber member, Hugh Carter, Dina Johnston with our Lawrence Schools Foundation on, Lawrence Schools Foundation was on the call, and Emily Peterson, who leads our Lawrence Restaurants Association. And so it was an exciting time for Lawrence to be highlighted and noticed around the country. They read an article in their local newspaper that highlighted our efforts in partnership here in Lawrence. While we appreciate the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, or CARES Act funds, these are funds that as a district, we're able to use in a variety of ways to address ways that we are responding to this pandemic. However, there is an urgent need for additional federal support in the form of direct flexible state aid. The state is prohibited from using COVID-19 relief funds, such as those included in the CARES Act, to supplant lost general fund revenue. And so I will urge, I will urge board members, community members, and staff to reach out to your elected officials and encourage them to ensure that our governor has that flexibility to supplant. And while they're at it, please make sure that they promote and ask them to fully fund special education. Congratulations to Woodlawn Elementary School's Family Engagement and Support Coordinator, Michelle Barnes, on being presented the ACE Award today. The person who nominated her wrote, "I don't know that I've ever worked at a school that had a Michelle, someone who is universally there for students, staff, and administration, and families alike. She fills so many roles for us, and I can't imagine Woodlawn without her." So many thanks to our Lawrence Schools Foundation. They presented Michelle with a $500 check on today. And then finally, we are getting a few questions about end-of-year school activities and access to our buildings. The governor's current stay-at-home order is set to expire on Sunday. We are waiting to see if that order is extended by the governor or by local health officials before making final decisions. We are working with other various principal groups and staff, and will consider input from students and parents before making decisions that we feel are both in the best interest of students and ways that it will enable us to follow all of our public health guidelines to ensure that everyone is safe. So when those decisions are made, as always, we will work with our schools to announce them. That's all I have.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Lewis. Do we have any patron commentary?
I did not receive any patron commentary.
Thank you, Elise. So we'll move on to board commentary.
Hi, Melissa. This is Shannon. I have a couple of quick items to share. I wanted to share that on April 14, the Quell Run Site Council held a virtual site council meeting. And most of the discussion centered around evaluation and feedback related to how our, that building has implemented the Continuous Learning Plan. And I was, I was pleased to hear supportive and positive comments. And we had some discussion as well about ways that the the building could gather data to help them inform the transition, since they are having a transition of leadership at that building this next year, or this next fall. So also, on the 15th, which was Wednesday, and also this past Wednesday, I participated in the Kansas Association of School Boards Board Leadership Forum. This is a very timely, helpful event, I feel. So I would encourage my fellow board members to consider, consider registering and calling into the Zoom meeting. It's being held every Wednesday over the lunch hour. I think they're trying to hold it to about 45 minutes and just touching on timely topics and giving board members an opportunity to share what's going on in their districts and ask questions. This past week, on the 22nd, a large part of the discussion centered around the governors, or the recently released updates to the consensus revenue estimates, which were pretty grim, unfortunately, estimating something along the lines of an $800 million hole in this year's budget for the state, just from the consensus revenue estimates that were made last November. So there was a lot of discussion about what that could potentially mean for K-12, pre-K through 12 public schools. And while the governor has said that they will try to manage the shortfall in a way that does not impact public schools, you always have to keep in mind that K-12 funding is over 50% of the state general fund budget. So I think that's something that we all need to be watching very closely and thinking about how it may impact us in the future. And then finally, the Policy Committee, we met on Monday by Zoom and had some discussion around some policy language that we've been looking at adding to our policy manual regarding behaviors toward staff, parents, and students. And if Kelly or Paula has anything additional to add to that about our policy meeting, I'll let them chime in on that. Thank you.
Shannon, do you know if there's any as secretness recordings happening on those Wednesdays for maybe board members who are unable to attend at that time?
I don't know for sure, but I can check on that. And I will get back to you. Thank you for asking.
Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Hi, hi, this is Carol. Hello. Okay, let's see. On the 21st, I attended a Zoom meeting with the Lawrence Schools Foundation. And we just went over the the plans for the free community meal distributions. And we went over the community partners. And let's see, on the 22nd, I attended a Zoom meeting with the Lawrence High School Site Council. And it was a very energetic meeting. We discussed plans for, just not plans, it was just a brainstorm session of how to honor our Lawrence High School seniors. And then on the 25th, we, let's see, I went to Schwegler Elementary, and we distributed, distributed over 200 meals. And that's all we have.
Excellent. Thank you, Paula.
Carol.
I mean, sorry. I whispered Carol.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry. Anyone else? Hey, thank you. Thank you. So at this time, we will make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Can I get a motion?
This is Shannon. And although I really hate to do this, I am going to request to pull the personnel report from Consent Agenda tonight.
Okay, yeah. Anyone object? I mean, well, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda with item 3.3 removed for further discussion?
I move that we
Okay, my second.
Go ahead, Shannon.
Oh, I was trying to make the motion, but I think Paula made the motion. So just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Sorry. Can I guess, did someone second?
Hi, this is Carol. I seconded.
Yeah, that was Carol, not Paula. That seconded the motion.
Thank you.
All right. Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Rahm?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Imble?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
At this time, we have Kathy, who's been, oh, I'm sorry.
What's it, can I? Yeah, can I acknowledge my retirement?
Yes, thank you.
So I want to just say thank you to two teachers today, two elementary teachers for their service. So thank you to Donna Hernscheer. If I have that name wrong, if somebody will jump in and say it correctly, I'd appreciate it. And Nancy at Hillcrest, she's taught for 19 years, and Nancy Ornburn for 41 years at New York Elementary. And I, we greatly appreciate your service and wish you a lovely retirement.
Thank you, Kelly. At this time, we have Kathy Johnson, Executive Director of Finance, who will come up and give us a budget report. Or not come up.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Kathy Johnson, Executive Director of Finance. I'm going to try to present my screen here for you. Is that working? You see it? Okay? Yeah?
Yes, yes, we do. I do.
Okay. So the purpose of the budget report tonight is to kind of update you on the budget planning so far for 2021. Try to share a little bit of legislative action, CARES Act, some state revenue information, budget and program evaluation committee work, and there's kind of a list of budget additions and reductions proposed for 2021 to talk through. Just kind of briefly, the legislative update, there really wasn't a lot of activity. The governor's budget was signed, and within that was the current law expectations of the increase to base state aid per pupil, the increase to special education funding, and some continued funding for things like parents as teachers, professional development mentoring, and some early childhood. They did do extend the sunset for high density at risk to 2022, which was about half a million dollars for us that could have been lost. So that was important to us. So those were some of the highlights of kind of what happened. Because the session hasn't really started back up, we'll see if there's any changes, if something does occur. The CARES Act, Dr. Lewis kind of alluded to already, and it is a small amount of money, not small, but a million four, that is the amount Lawrence is anticipated to receive. And there's about 12 categories of things that we can use those funds for. But as he mentioned, it's really not something that we can spend more than on one-time dollars. I guess Shannon was the one that mentioned that we can't supplant it. But I don't remember. One of them did. But the reality is, federal funds can't take the place of any kind of loss of resources. And so they're looking at it as being things that maybe that we need to do to supplement the shutdown and extend summer learning, possibly addressing or reimbursing us for some of the costs we had to incur for the meals, or the technology and needs to our students and teachers for doing the connectivity. PD on sanitizing and minimizing future spread are all kind of things that fall into the categories of the the grant options. It does allow for some, providing some principles, some needed resources in their building, very specific to their students, or addressing our higher at-risk populations for things that may have occurred, homelessness, things that may have occurred as a result of the virus. And so those are some of the kind of real general areas leadership is trying to work through with the input of buildings to see where they might direct some of those resources in order to either get reimbursed or to help with some future needs. The funds are available potentially in June. We haven't seen final details. And by September 30 of 2021 is when they have to be spent. It's not ongoing money. So we need to be mindful that we don't spend it on something that would become a recurring expense unless we decide to build that into the budget going forward. Shannon mentioned some of the state revenue estimates and the projections being lowered by nearly 827 million for the current year. With the legislature being delayed, they could come back during sign-and-die session and make some decisions. If not, they don't come back until next March. Do I need to do that?
No.
The concern is, is if the resources don't come in, and our general fund does fall below zero in some fashion, the governor is authorized to reduce spending in different allotments. And how she chooses to do that will be something that we won't know until the time comes. She has indicated publicly that they're really trying to maintain funding for education and essential services. I think the concern here, as Shannon mentioned, is historically when revenues haven't been sufficient, school districts tend to see cuts, could be mid-year, could be through the end of this year, we're fine, through the end of 2021, we're fine, but yet 21, 22 becomes something that we weren't anticipating. So those are all things that we're not completely sure what's going to happen, but that we have to be mindful of because we're definitely seeing a change in revenues, and they're going to have a significant impact on the state. Any questions on those particular slides at this point? So the next slide, and there was more detail in your overview or your bigger report, but this is some of the different things that the Budget Program and Evaluation Committee worked on throughout the year, starting in August, kind of the overview, reviewing last year's budget, reviewing the current year's budget, looking at estimated funding for 2021, because we knew what that was going to look like. We also had a pretty good idea of what our salary packages would be for 2021 if we were to do the same as last year. We spent some time really looking at, well, then we did some work on the school SRO and security guard information and funding, and that was part of a board report in January. We spent some time really looking at the distribution of staffing positions. Our staffing is, you know, that 80 to 85% of our budget, and really understanding where that looks across the district and by building, how much, where are those resources going and in what buildings, and how does that, are they going to the right buildings? And so along with that exercise of looking at distribution of staffing, we also did an exercise that Zach did, and that was tearing some of our schools, looking at some of the risk factors, and tying those to a little bit, but not directly, to resources, and are those higher at-risk buildings getting the resources, or the larger amount of resources of staffing, or what does look like? And then really the question of, are those resources making a difference? Are those schools predicting out where they look like they should be? And if they aren't, and it's not resources, then what other factors, instructional strategies, deployment of the curriculum, a variety of other things? And so we had a lot of discussion about that as we looked at where those staffing resources are. Tier fringe benefits, knowing that our increase of fringe benefits year after year continues to be high, we spent some time really talking through how that looks, and then the fringe benefit committee went back and did some bids on our benefits, which in the end were able to kind of do almost a budget neutral versus have to plan for, or come up with a million dollars to fund the same benefits again in the next school year. Looking through enrollment projections and elementary class size, we spent quite a bit of time with elementary class size, and looking at different options, thresholds, the cost of those options, and trying to be as budget neutral as possible with some of that, just because of the new dollars being limited based on not growing with enrollment. We spent a lot of time too, looking at some of the thresholds in school districts to our east, lowering thresholds within the district to be different or all alike, or in a variety of scenarios. We also spent some time looking at multi-age. And before the shutdown, there was a plan to really continue to evaluate that and maybe try to pilot a building or two, and as a result of the shutdown, synergies have been directed elsewhere, and I think that, I'm kind of looking at Dr. Lewis, but I believe that we're planning on continuing to evaluate elementary thresholds and multi-age and other options as we look into this next school year, so that we have some data and some information and some teacher help and curriculum teaching and learning help in what that might look like, so that we can have a better place to start for piloting that in the 21, 22 school year.
Yeah, so basically, that would give us a full academic year to delve deep into ensuring that the curriculum is solid, the professional development is solid, in terms of looking at what we call multi-age classrooms. But I will say that as a result of this COVID-19, it has caused us in many K-12 institutions around the country to look at how we can and possibly need to deliver reconstruction in a different manner. Obviously, that is contingent upon our guideline. So the short answer to that is yes, we will continue those conversations and have this next coming academic year.
So kind of going through then, we spent not as much time, and we'll circle back around, understanding middle school and high school, but basically ratios and thresholds were, and you'll see this in the list, we're looking at staffing with the existing for 20, the fiscal year 20 being used in 2021 based on projected enrollment. We did look at some of the operational budgets in more detail, and then there's a priority exercise of budget considerations of additions and reductions. We also spent some time looking at, or starting the conversation, I should say, about whether it's para educator pay or classified pay as a whole, knowing that that really fits kind of the big salary pool, and traditionally in Lawrence, what happens through the negotiations process is kind of the domino of what classified and administrative salary pools will see. And so looking at future meetings with the committee of just understanding how those matrices work at the levels and some of the market, to have some additional conversations in that, in how classified are paid. So that the, it's part of your report, and what I have here is kind of the budget committee's list of kind of where they came to consensus, and there was more detail in the report that you received, but in general, you'll see that we started with what our new monies were, which was the million seven, and then assuming those salary pools for certified, classified, and administration are similar to last year, we then take off of the new money, a million nine. So we're in the hole before we start, about 223,000. Had we not been able to get fringe benefits to be budget neutral, we, you could add another million dollars to that. So when we started all of this process and evaluating kind of where our resources are in the spending, we were actually looking at closer to a million two deficit before we even got started. So the bids coming back with fringe benefits was a huge help in creating some budget neutrality. And then as we go through there, through some administrative restructure, resignations that happen mid-year, hires that have happened mid-year, and just the transition of some department structures, there is $75,000 through that administrative restructure that's savings that is being kind of put back into the pool to be allocated or used for other budget considerations. The elementary staffing, as I mentioned, was based on projected enrollment. Elementary was an area where enrollment declined, so when we're looking at projections, we're really not seeing a lot of change in elementary from where the lower enrollment was. There was a mid kind of change in April with one of our buildings, and so the net general fund savings, although we're decreasing, were teachers, it's the 5.5. Part of that decrease in the FTE of the elementary was our Title II A money that was contingency. So we always drop back to what basic thresholds are, and then add contingency as we need to. The middle school was kind of a break even, and the high school was one at each school, and then the other one at each school, which equals the total of four, is there's some continued unfilled position that is being removed from the cap, and that kind of creates that four reduction there. Then there's sort of an add back at the high school level of college and career academy counselor and social positions. A spent facilitator reduction due to some restructuring, some nurse FTE, the IT tech support, there is a reallocation on the list of taking away the four in-school suspension para educator positions, four para positions equal to certified FTE, and then the request is for another two FTE certified positions at the middle school, that would create that total of four, one at each middle school in order to, and that ties back to some of the discipline conversations you've had, and the restorative justice implementation of that with fidelity, as Anna says. And if you have more questions on that one towards the end, Anna has some additional information. And then there was a lot of requests that were through the facilities and operations, the ones that kind of floated to the top are there, and then the staff relations coordinator is an HR position to help support continued conflict resolution and provide some actual direct support for our classified employees. And then you kind of see that that black line, and you'll see that we get out of the savings, we've spent those dollars as a result, and things below that black line were things that did not fall into what could be funded. When we talked through this at the budget committee this last meeting, there was general consensus that this list, with some conversation about facilities and operations, and is there any ability to kind of exchange or give them some flexibility in where their greatest needs are? And in visiting with facilities and operations, instead of designating a specific custodian to a school, their flexibility in allowing or having a floater would be more helpful. And in addition, that floater position, because the assistant locksmith was below the line, that person could also serve as a backup and provide the current locksmith position with the support that they need for those doors. So you'll see when, on the slide for the motion, and we'll leave it for questions and follow-up on any of these areas, that we did kind of adjust that floater, and then you can see where that is above the line. And so the motion that refers to the list would be this, this list as it is presented on this last slide, and it was also in your board report on the motion slide. So that's kind of general high level, and I'll open it up to questions, and I know Dr. Lewis and Anna can provide additional information, as well as I know Melissa and Kelly from being on the committee may also have some insight for questions.
Questions, board members?
Melissa, this is Shannon, and I have a question. And I have heard in some of the conversations I've been a part of with board members from other districts, that some districts are looking at basically a hiring freeze at this point because of the budget uncertainty. Dr. Lewis, are we, and they were talking about how that hiring freeze is extending to teacher positions. I know we typically have in the range of 100 or more new hires every year for teaching positions. Have we, are we thinking about, or have we discussed any sort of hiring freeze?
No, we haven't at this point, we haven't discussed a hiring freeze, but generally those new teachers are replacing teachers who are either retired or left the district.
What about for non-teaching positions?
No, we haven't discussed that, hiring freeze.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't, I don't so much have a question, just a comment from, this is GR, from sitting on the facilities committee for my entire time on the board, I'm just excited to see FNO positions on here, and I'm excited to support that as a board member, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, GR.
This is Shannon, I will second GR's excitement in that area. I think obviously the needs that facilities and operations has are more substantial than what we are even close to being able to meet with our current budget situation, but I appreciate that those requests have been given some consideration this year.
If we don't have any other questions or comments, can I get a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion. I recommend the Board of Education approve the list of budget considerations, additions and reductions as presented in the budget report for implementation in 2020, 21 budget year.
I can second?
I'll second that.
All right, I have Johnson second first, so I'm gonna stick with her. Okay, Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Rock?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you again for your hard work, Kathy, and the budget, not saying it because I'm on the budget committee, but to the budget committee and district leaders. At this time, we are going to recess to executive session. I'm going to pull up the motion unless someone else already has it up. I'll go ahead and make it. I move to recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, with Dr. Anthony Lewis and Dr. Anna Stubblefield invited to be present, and with the board to return to open session at 7:13 PM with possible actions to follow.
I second, this is Shannon.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Shannon, aye. Shannon, I.